Good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, August 11th, and I would like to call this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is 6:30 PM. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
I'll pledge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do the pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had the flags this week. That was great. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Kuzmato.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have one correction, and it's to our closed-session item. The Circuit Court case number was a clerical error. It should read 2019-005235CZ, and that's all I have at this time.
Sure. Move to adopt the agenda as corrected. Support. Any discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Members, please vote. Supervisor Viviano votes yes because he's having a technical error. Motion passes unanimously. Just one second. Moving on to approval of the bills. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I sent over some questions regarding the sewer treatment fees. I was wondering if anyone had a chance to look at those.
We did. We discussed it internally, and I believe some of our department heads can shed some light on your questions. Mr. Van Tiflin, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll do my best to try and answer the questions. And I think, just to, as some background, the Macomb Township is a customer of Macomb County, who is a customer of the Great Lakes Water Authority. So the bill that we get from them includes all of the charges that Great Lakes Water Authority charges Macomb County for sewage treatment. In addition, there are, there were improvements that have been made to the Macomb Interceptor Drain and the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor Drain that you're seeing as far as the bond payments go. Those are for infrastructure projects that those two entities have done to improve those facilities. So they're not really an intermediary. It's been this way since, I think, the '70s, that we're a customer of Macomb County. What's recent, the recent change was Macomb County and Oakland County taking over the pipes that were actually within Macomb County. So the Great Lakes Water Authority doesn't own anything within the boundaries of Macomb County. It all goes down that Edison corridor, down to Eight Mile, and then dumps into the Great Lakes Water Authority system there.
Okay, because I noticed in, on the invoice, it was associated with the sewer treatment bill, which was $733,000 of memory surgery correct. Only $548,000 was for the, approximately, was for the actual treatment of sewage. Do you know how that's calculated? Is that metered somehow, or?
Yeah.
Or is it based on our use of fresh water?
No. There's one meter that meters the entire township, and that's at 21 Mile and Garfield. So all of the flow that's collected from all the houses in the township go to that one location, and that's metered. The way they break down the cost is they take a running average over several years of how much we use in comparison to our neighbors, and that's our percentage of the overall cost. So it's really on a lump-sum basis. It's, it's not, you know, we don't get, that number doesn't change every month depending on how much water goes through that meter.
So they're properly our vendor. Great Lakes Water Authority is just a third party that handles it past that point, right?
The, the way to think of it is, Great Lakes Water Authority transports it and treats it before it goes back into the river. Macomb County and Oakland County are responsible for getting it to the point where it goes into the Great Lakes Water Authority system.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato. Any more questions on the bill run? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the bills. That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four, approval of the previous meeting minutes from July 28, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from July 28, 2021.
Support. Was that Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the previous meeting minutes. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Should I move the consent agenda in its entirety? Support. Any discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda items. My apologies in my haste. I skipped over public comment, which we'll do now. If any members of the public wish to make comment, please approach the podium on the right side of the room. Please remember, you have a three-minute time limit. This is on agenda items only. If there are any members of the public who are participating remotely, please raise your hand digitally, and you will be called upon. Nobody in the room? Mr. Ivanowski, is there anyone digitally who wishes to participate?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, seeing that there's no public comment on the, on the agenda items, we will move Item six is a public hearing. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Van Tiflin to give us some background. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is a correction to a previously established special assessment district. This dates back to 2018, when the development was, was completed. At the time, this was supposed to be the second phase to an existing development called Strathmore up on 26 Mile near Luckman Road. At the time, the unit numbers were supposed to be numbered 153 through 281. As it turned out, the developer decided to separate that phase, that second phase to that development, into its own standalone condominium development. So it's now numbered 1 through 129. However, they didn't go back and revise the resolution for the special assessment district. So if you look at it, look at the resolution, the addresses are, are correct with the exception of one, but the unit numbers are not. So in order to try and clear this up, so this doesn't become an issue later on, we want to bring it to the board so we can have this corrective resolution passed. We've notified the residents, so if anybody has any concerns with it, they can address those tonight. The other correction had to do with one address, was, some numbers were transposed. Those are in the resolution. I should say that none of the pricing changes here, so the costs that the residents would see would not change. They're going to be billed the exact same thing as a result of this being passed tonight that they have before. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin.
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
How was the error discovered? Was it because billings or the Treasurer's Office got returned mail? Or how was it discovered?
I think through the Treasurer's Office. They, they were preparing the roll, I think, last year, and noticed that the unit numbers didn't match up with what the record showed for those individual parcels.
And I take it from the, your presentation, that there's no necessity to review any other street lighting SADs for errors, correct? This is a unusual circumstance?
Yeah, we've, we've gone through, as part of the audit that we're doing, we've gone through all the other agreements and everything, all the other ones seem to be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato. Any other questions from the board at this time, before I open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing on the resolution to adopt the street lighting SAD, which would be the corrective resolution for Strathmore Site Condominiums Two. And the time is 6:40 PM. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may approach the microphone or raise their hand digitally. Mr. Ivanowski, is there anyone?
No, not at this time, sir.
Okay, seeing as no one wishes to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing, and the time is also 6:40 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to adopt the resolution for the street lighting SAD corrective resolution for Strathmore Site Condominium Two. Members, please vote. Oh, wait, we have to roll call that, don't we? Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzmato?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Moving on to item seven, which is our unfinished business. Last meeting, we postponed the cost-sharing agreement for the beginning of the Romeo Plank expansion. Tonight, before us, all the board was provided with a new cost-sharing agreement. We've had a chance to review it internally. The costs exceeded our initial estimates. There was a lot more right-of-way acquisition than internally we had considered. The, the prices that the county gave us are an estimate based on their, what they believe worst-case scenario in their process of designing the road and how much property we, we may actually have to acquire. But they also agreed that we could split it into two fiscal years. So we will stick to our budgeted amount of 1.2 in the first fiscal year and pay the remainder in fiscal year 2022. So is there any questions or discussion?
Just one quick. That'll cover the roundabout?
This is for, yes, this is from 22 Mile, the 21 and, Romeo Plank between 21 and 28, 21 and a half through 23 Mile Road, including the intersection, which may or may not at this point be a roundabout.
At 22 and Romeo Plank.
At 22 and Romeo Plank.
Okay, so that'll take us to 23.
Correct.
Okay.
That's part of the design that they're working on, whether it's going to be a roundabout or a standard intersection.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the execution of a cost-sharing agreement for the design and right-of-way costs with Macomb County Department of Roads.
Any further discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just had the opportunity to get a revised cost-sharing agreement. Is the provision of the split payment in, in that document, or is that covered by a separate memorandum of understanding?
It's in this document. Item four.
Item four, yeah.
So the first half, we will pay upon execution of this agreement, which is 1.2. The remainder to be paid after July 1, 2022, which will be the beginning of our next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Anything else?
I had a quick question. Again, you know, it seems like the commonplace has been, it starts as an estimate, and then it's, you know, 50% more than what we thought. Does that happen more in the construction phase? Maybe Mr. Van Tiflin can answer it. Or is that something that could also possibly happen here, where it comes in way over budget? Traditionally?
Yeah, so the, the design costs are based on a percentage of construction, so obviously that is going to fluctuate depending on what those costs are. But also, the, the major portion of this is the right-of-way acquisition, and I think land costs have, have gone up. So they're trying to be conservative with their number. In talking with their right-of-way department, it sounds like they went worst-case scenario here. Hopefully, you know, this, this will come in lower, and we would, you know, see some of this money be put towards the construction phase of it. We just won't know that until they actually start doing the right-of-way acquisition, and they need to finish the design first before they can really throw a good number at that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, seeing no more discussion, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the execution of the cost-sharing agreement for the design of the right-of-way costs and the design, and the right-of-way costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the Romeo Plank widening and intersection work from .5 miles north of 21 Mile Road to 23 Mile Road. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight. We have a request to, for the construction pay estimate, number two, 2021 Sanitary Sewer Cleaning and CCT TV Investigative Project, number 249-0215, to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services, in the amount of $26,726.34. Is there a motion? So moved. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. This will be pay cert number two. It'll be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount already stated, $26,726.34. As everyone's aware, Pipe Tech is the low bidder cleaning and TVing sanitary sewers within the township as part of our ongoing CIP program, and we are recommending we move forward with this invoice.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to pay the construction pay estimate, number two, to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services, in the amount of $26,726.34. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine. We have a purchase requisition to Paymar Enterprises, Inc., for an emergency sewer lead repair on Broadmoor Lane, in the amount of $53,843.2. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Supervisor Viviano and board members. As, as stated here already, we had an emergency sewer repair. This is a repair I discussed with Mr. Viviano. I take these things very seriously, and, and we approach them very aggressively. Paymar Enterprises is one of the 11 contractors on our prequal list, and they were available. They've done good work for us in the past, and we move forward with this repair, and I'm recommending approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the purchase requisition to Paymar Enterprises for the emergency sewer lead repair in the amount of $53,843.2. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Moving on to item 10. We are looking at a conditional rezoning from residential one-family urban to residential multiple-family low-density, located on the east side of Romeo Plank Road, north of 25 Mile Road, permanent parcel ID 0805301008. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board. This conditional rezoning request is from R1 to R2L. This is the last remaining piece of the former Wolverine Golf Course. Existing zoning allows for three units per acre, but requires single-family homes. It's roughly 44 acres, so potentially 132 houses could be built. The conditional rezoning would allow for duplex housing. The petitioner has set forth a number of conditions that, that are outlined in your packet that they will be held to in the development of this property. Those items include limiting themselves to 116 units, which would be 58 duplexes. The units would be for sale only, not for rent, extra landscaping buffers in addition to what's required by ordinance, and a few others. At the August 3 Planning Commission meeting, a hearing was held, a public hearing was held, and the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval for this conditional rezoning. At this time, we're asking the board to approve this conditional rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any discussion?
I just have one question, if I could. So it says not for rent, for sale only. Does that prohibit somebody from buying the property and then re-renting it out that way? So the developer can't rent it, but I could buy it and then rent it to somebody else?
Potentially. It depends on what, later stages would, would have things like the master deed that could be incorporated in it that may prevent that.
Okay.
But I guess ultimately, that, even that may not totally prevent that from happening.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the conditional rezoning from R1 to R2L on permanent parcel ID 08-05-301-008. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11 is another conditional rezoning from general commercial C2 to residential multifamily high-density R2L, which is located on the northwest corner of 24 Mile Road and the future Garfield Road, permanent parcel ID 0807400016. Is there a motion?
Motion to, motion to approve.
Support. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board. Just to clarify, it's multifamily low-density R2L. It does say high there, but it also says R2L. It is low density is the request. So as I mentioned, this is from C2 to R2L. Property would be located at the northwest corner of 24 Mile and future Garfield. Petitioner is seeking to downzone the use in order to develop senior housing facility. Rezoning would allow for such a development where the existing zoning would not allow for this. Much like the last item, they've given themselves a number of conditions that they have to abide by moving forward. Those are such things as keeping it to one, one-story, building a masonry wall on the west property line, and a number of others. At this time, we are recommending approval. The Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 at the August 3 Planning Commission to also recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions or discussion?
Just one quick question. It's not very technical, but I can understand the need for a masonry wall if it's going to be a commercial development like it's currently zoned for, but if we're zoning it to low-density residential, just out of curiosity, what is the, what was the impetus for a, a wall?
Well, a couple things. And you're right, by rezoning it, they wouldn't actually be required to have the wall. That is something that they volunteered as one of their conditions, that they would continue to build the wall. The neighboring property owners did buy property next to C2, which would require a wall. So by rezoning, you're removing the requirement for a wall. So I think that the petitioner did the right thing and is still willing to build the wall.
May I add that, at the hearing, the adjacent property owners were not happy that there would only be a landscaping berm there as originally planned. And the adjacent property owner specifically requested that the applicant consider building a wall, and as a result, the applicant did offer that in the hearing as a condition.
Okay. Seems a little odd to have a wall between two different residential, you know, neighborhoods.
Right, well, it's going to be a, a senior living facility with memory care, so it's going to be a one-story building. So it's, it's really going to be a, a business that's going to be there. But that, that's, that's how it materialized. It's odd, but I think they satisfied the neighbors, and the adjacent neighbors were happy with that condition.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the conditional rezoning from C2 to R2L on permanent parcel number 0807400016. Members, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. All right, we are now on public comment again. This is on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to make comment who is present may approach the microphone on the right side of the room. Anyone who wishes to participate remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called upon. And please remember, you have a three-minute time limit. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Mike Willemson. I'm at 15726 Camden Drive. The comment I have is about the proposed Meyer that's going to be at 24 and Hayes. And the question I have for the board is this, or the comment I have for the board is this. During the, I think it was the zoning commission hearing, the representatives of Meyer said that Salmar, the owner of the property, now was, was going to take care of the acceleration and deceleration lanes. And, you know, the public is not really privy to any of the details for that, but that was seen to be accepted just, you know, offhand, that that would be taken care of. And the comment was also made, I don't know if it was at that meeting or if the Planning Commission meeting, where they had their traffic engineer from Fishbeck. He said that the traffic study was done in that intersection area in April, okay, which is maybe early on when people started getting vaccinated. We're still like in the middle of the pandemic, not sure how much traffic that's, you know, going to really measure compared to what the normal traffic volume would be in that area at that time. And he made the comment that they, they estimated that half of the customer traffic for Meyer would be drive-by traffic anyway, so there would be no increase in traffic. The comment I have, and the question I have for the board is, would you consider, or can we consider having an unbiased measure of the traffic there, not having their consultants do the measurement there for the traffic, as well as some sort of assurance that we're going to get some sort of improvements to that intersection? Because, as you know, right now, the intersection is very congested at, especially certain times of the day, you know, for rush hour traffic, and as well as the, the condition of Hayes from 23 Mile up to 25 is in very bad condition. And we're going to have a lot more truck traffic coming in. They said that a lot of, most of their truck traffic's going to be coming in at night, you know, for deliveries and so on. It's just going to tear the road up. And I just want, one more comment I want to make is that we just got a, billions of dollars that are going to be allocated to Michigan here for infrastructure. Can we wait? Can we wait and work with the county somehow and get some improvements done to the road before we start, you know, approving commercial development in that area? I understand that it's zone C2, that we can't really do anything about that, but at least can we be more prepared for it before we approve something like that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Mainerich. I live at 15721 Camden Drive in Macomb. I am also here to discuss about, well, first of all, with the Meyer at 24 and Hayes, the proposed Meyer. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was brought up about a Salmar case, that Salmar may have been willing to dismiss his case in exchange for the Meyer plans being approved. The attorney said that the case was dismissed, but yet I noticed today you'll be discussing in closed session a lit, pending litigation with Salmar. And I looked on the court records and can see that it's still open and that there's a settlement conference next week on the 18th. So, so that, that just didn't seem right. Also, Supervisor Viviano, in your Channel 4 interview, you told the reporter that the Planning Commission and ZBA did what they were required to do, but I disagree, and several other residents disagree. Variances are outside of a C2 zoning ordinance, so are special land use. Variances are outside of a C2 zoning ordinance, so are special land usage. So those were not required to be passed. A special land use, it, if it's detrimental to the surrounding properties, it, it shouldn't be approved. It says, you know, special land use, and this is on your application, for a project that is outside the permitted use for property that may potentially impact the adjacent properties. I think at all of those meetings, the residents have shown how it will negatively impact those adjacent properties. There is not a masonry wall surrounding that property. There is no wall across the consumer energy easement or the, you know, water department easement that's there. I don't understand why the wall to the east was put on the other side of the easements instead of inside the property to where they could have closed off that masonry wall. And then that would in effect make that building, Meyer building, further away from those residents. Right now, it's less than 100 feet from the masonry wall of where that building is going to be, which would be the equivalent of how far my neighbor who lives behind me, that's how close their neighbor, their house is to me. So also, the traffic study was done by Fishback, and at the Planning Commission meeting, it was noted by the, the commissioners that the date of the report was in June. So they thought the study was done in June. The study was done the second week of April, which is when Utica Community Schools had all of the kids in remote learning. So none of those schools were in session that week.
I apologize, but your time is up. I'm going to have to cut you off. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Mr. Ivanowski, is there anyone?
Yes, sir, we have Mr. David Piper wanting to comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Piper.
Yes, my name is Dave Piper. I live at 15889 Van Meter, and I am a volunteer member of the Friends of Macomb Township. We work to provide benefits for the community, to enhance the community, such as scholarships. And we currently have been holding car wash, excuse me, not car washes, bottle and can returns for the Glenn Peters School in their parking lot on the third Sunday of each month. And this Sunday is the third Sunday of August. We will be in the parking lot of Glenn Peters School on Hindrick, just south of 21 Mile, between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And I'm just asking for residents, if they would like to donate the cans, we would be happy to take them from them and provide some benefits for the Glenn Peters School for all the great work they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Piper.
One more thing. If people cannot make the drop-offs, we do have a, we have volunteers that will actually pick it up. And they can text 586-610-3511 to arrange for pickups from right from your front porch or garage. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ivanowski, is there anyone else?
No, sir, that was it.
Okay, seeing as there's no one wishing to speak, we will close public comment, and we will move on to trustee comments. Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, just one, one little short one. I don't know if any of the board members had a, a chance to attend the, our township, the, the music concerts, and then they had a night show. Just, if you didn't go, you missed something that was really good. It was good music. A lot of people attended, well-organized. The parking rec did a great job in organizing it. And all the staff that, that did it, because it takes a lot of people to run something like that. So if you didn't go, you missed something good, and you should go next year. So, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Cusmano.
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Lucido.
Nothing for me tonight.
Trustee Nevers.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Treasurer Gillette.
Yes, I have a number of items, but I'm not going to talk about them. Nothing.
All right. Clerk Posey.
I have nothing this evening.
I just want to, I'll want to make comment about the one item. We're about to enter in a closed session. It is for a Salmar case, which is as stated on our agenda. However, this Salmar property is not the same property that is at 24 and Hayes. This particular parcel property is at Hindrick and Hall Road. And we did have a misprint on our agenda. The case number was listed wrong. The correct case number for anyone who did not catch the beginning of the meeting is 2019005235-CZ. So at this time, we need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to adjourn to closed session. Members, please vote. It's called for a voice vote.
Close session require a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it needs to be a roll call.
Roll call. My apologies. Roll call. Clerk Posey, recall the roll.
Yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That motion carries. The time, we are now entering closed session. The time is 7:05 PM. So we are returning from closed session, and the time is 7:26 PM. At this time, we are going to call for a, a vote on a motion. Mr. Alloy, can you state the motion for the Board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We're requesting the Board to move to approve the consent judgment as presented in the case of Salmar Royal Village LLC versus Macomb Township, case number 20195235CZ, which approves a development and conceptual site plan, which at the property at Hall and Hindrick, the development will be a four-story senior housing building, a three-story indoor self-storage building, a linear commercial retail center building, and an outlot closest to Hall Road for a drive-through restaurant.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. There is a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent judgment, consent judgment as read by our attorney, Mr. Alloy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. No, there was no setup for consent in there. Okay, that's our, concludes our business for today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by trustee Nevers. Members, please vote. That motion, that motion carries unanimously. The time is 7:28 PM. We are adjourned.